I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order, today being December 9th, 2019. Meeting tonight is starting at 7:05 at the regular location at the Higgins Middle School Library. This meeting is being recorded by the PBED School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris, and is also being broadcast live on PBED Access Telecommunications, PAT. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent that is permitted by law. Before we begin today, we go to a moment of silence. Of course, I think we all know that it's been an extremely difficult, emotional week for all of us here in PBED, across our school district, across our city, as we have had two wonderful educators who gave so much to the city of PBED and to our students pass away both unexpectedly. First, I want to talk about Judy Maniatus. Judy Maniatus was our high school vice principal. She was a lifelong educator, unit director, and has served the last several years as the high school vice principal. She's done a terrific job, one of extremely difficult position, and she did an outstanding job for us, contributed in so many ways to the success we've had at our school, and again in a very challenging situation. Judy's passing was extremely difficult for the high school community and everybody across the city. She touched a great number of lives. I've had a number of students reach out to me talking about, or giving examples of her going that extra mile for the kids under her care. And it was wonderful to hear how many lives she touched and how many lives she helped improve, and she's a tremendous loss. And of course, our superintendent Kara Murtagh passed away unexpectedly, leaving a huge void in our community, in our hearts, in our school system, in just countless ways. Kara was such a kind, caring, compassionate person who really gave everything she had to the PBED school system and to our students. I think it's the most difficult job in the city, being superintendent of schools, and Kara did it with such class, such grace, and such commitment to every day trying to do what's best for our kids. I can say in the hundreds of conversations, thousands of conversations I've probably had with her, and I think we could all attest to this, all she spoke about was her kids and my kids, and how to improve their quality of education and their lives in our school system. And she made such an impact, it's hard to really describe and speak about the impact she made. I feel she's put us on a terrific course here in our district, and I'm really forever grateful for that and for everything she gave to our city. I think about her mom, her brother and sister, and she was just a tremendous person, lived in PBED all her life, and again gave so much to it. It was really wonderful, and you know, and I think PBED is a special place in this regard, that it was really wonderful how the community came together in grief and in support of one another for both Kara and Judy's passing. It was really something special that, again, I don't think every community has, that feeling of community, that feeling of camaraderie, and so many people came to Kara's services. And truly, again, Kara touched so many lives, and for people to stand in line hours in the cold just to pay tribute to her, to honor her memory, and to show the respect, to show respect for everything that she meant to our city and to our district. It was really something special. It was really, during the worst of times here in the city, it was really the best of us, and it was really tremendous to see, and I'm really grateful to the whole city for giving Kara that tribute that I think was so well deserved. I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and please keep in their minds Kara Murtagh, Judy Maniatus, and their families. All right, and today we'll go to the agenda, and we have, "The West School is in the house." It's great to have some students here. I know a couple of them, really top-notch students, and people who, you know, four students are doing just a great job at the West School, and it's great to have the West School here today. We're gonna in a moment do the National Anthem, excuse me, the, actually, I'm gonna have you sing the National Anthem. No pressure, I'm just gonna throw that at you right now. I'm only kidding. The Pledge of Allegiance we'll do in a moment, and then also we're gonna hear a report from the West School about the PBED Gives program and what the West School is doing, which is great to have. So first, our first student is Aiden Horgan. He's an 11-year-old fifth grader. He has a brother at the Higgins in the eighth grade. He's a sports kid, I know that, baseball, basketball, he's always into sports, and right now he's on the West School basketball team, right? And I know that season's gonna be starting. Great to have you here, Aiden. We also have Ava Ryan, right, excuse me, Ava Ryan, 10-year-old fifth grader at the West School. She has two brothers, one who's in the second grade and one in preschool here at the West, and I think one, the younger brother, your youngest brother's here. And you also have at least seven cousins, is that true, scattered around? I know you had some, I didn't know it was seven. But also, she's a sports girl too. She loves playing sports, hang out with friends, play softball, she's on the West School Girls' Basketball Team also, so great to have you here, Ava. We also have Michael Cranfield, he's 11-year-old fifth grader also at the West School. He enjoys riding his bike, playing video games, and being with his friends, and his favorite school subject is math. That's great, nice to have you here, Michael. And we have Isabella Izzy Shed, 10-year-old fifth grader also at the West School, and she enjoys playing sports, and she's on the West School Girls' Basketball Team, right? She enjoys being outside and playing with her friends, and her favorite subject is also math. That's terrific. So it's great to have all four of you here, and you guys ready to do the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, why don't we all stand? Yep, that'd be great if you can give us a report and however you'd like to handle it, but I know it's PBED Gives, and we'd love to hear what's going on at the West.
My name is Nick Coler, it's called "The West," and I'm asking all of our little boys and girls, and each one of the West, they participate in the year of school, so the rest of the children, they're just like, 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 school. For fall sports, the fall season has ended and winter sports has started. And our Thanksgiving football game was a success. We won. For performing arts, the Adams family was also successful. And it was the first show run by our new director, Mrs. Stephanie Manning. And stage one is preparing for Drama Fest with their production of The Christians. Concert band, Fuddruckers fundraiser is tonight. Tonight, and they've had a cannon bottle fundraiser, as well as mattress sale for the Performing Arts Department. Corral had their annual City Hall concert this past weekend, which was Saturday and Sunday, as well as Christmas tree lighting and full houses trolley ride.
Other extracurricular activities at the school include the Deca New York Field Trip. A lot of the students recently came back from that. And the International Club recently started doing a new thing where they have a new nationality of the month. So in the hallway, the main hallway of the high school, there's a glass case that displays the nationality of the body of PB MHS. And in effort to give back to our community, NHS has also started collecting new toys for a toy drive. And Youth Advisory Council has started their hat and mitten drive. Guidance is continuing to communicate information through Naviance. So career speaker series has been really helpful to a lot of students. The Salem State On The Spot admissions has also been moved. Colleges like Tufts and UMass have also visited our school, which is really helpful to the seniors especially. And guidance continues to send out scholarship opportunities and volunteer opportunities for all the students. And as mentioned before, the past week has been kind of tough on the PB High School community. On Wednesday or Thursday, a PB Strong poster was put up next to the main office. And it was really inspiring to see a lot of the students contribute and put sticky notes with the inspirational messages to remember Miss Mertag.
Thank you. That was excellent. Any questions for our students? Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming tonight and thank you for all the good work you're doing. And we know it is tough at the high school right now and throughout the city. And actually, even though you're high school students, you do represent the students throughout the city, so you have a very big job. But I think we would all like to thank you on behalf of all the students who participated in helping to get us through last week. It meant a lot to see the students singing and to hear them, to hear the band playing, to see the JROTC presenting the colors at the cemetery, and to see all the students that lined the route, or in the case of the high school students who actually attended Miss Murtagh's wake. That all meant a lot to all of us. So thank you as representatives of all of our students.
Well said, Mrs. Dunn. Thank you. All right. Thank you both for being here. Very important. Thank you. All right. Now we'll go back to the agenda. And we have regular school committee meeting minutes from November 26, 2019, up for approval. I'll open that up to the committee.
Motion to receive and approve?
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion to approve the minutes from the regular school committee meeting of November 26. That motion was made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you. Next item, approval of bills. Mrs. Coppender?
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 4358, in the amount of $105,826.19, dated December 10, 2019, subject to audit.
Second. Great. You've heard the motion for approval of warrant A, number 4358. That motion was made by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 4359, dated December 10, 2019, in the amount of $396,696.72, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Coppender for approval of warrant B, number 4359, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Coppender. Next, we'll go to continued business. We have a couple of items. First one is MSBA Higgins Project. Mrs. Dunn, anything new to report?
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. The school year 2020 budget update, so if we can maybe hold that to the next meeting as well. Well, school feasibility appropriation. Mrs. Dunn, anything new on that item?
Just to let everyone know, we are currently in preparation for the selection process for the OPM, which is a required module with the MSBA process. So we're just going forward with that. It's just a timely requirement.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Public participation. Is there anyone in the audience at this time that would like to come forward? Microphone is open. Mrs. Henry?
Do you want me to give you my address and all that fun stuff?
Yeah.
I can. Sure. My name is Mary Henry. I live at 15 Fay Avenue in PB D. I am also the president of the PB D Federation of Teachers. And I just wanted to say thank you to all of you and to our community for showing what a wonderful community we are and coming together in these tragic times. I also wanted to let you know that the PB D Federation of Teachers has some candy canes from the holiday stool. And what we have decided to do with them is to donate them to the National Honor Society to sell candy canes for Kara, that's what we're calling it, from Miss Murtagh. And all the funds that come from this fundraiser will go to the PB D Education Foundation. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Thank you.
Oh, if you have a student, they can buy them over the next week in the cafeteria. Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll go to the superintendent's report. And I wanted to ask our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Christopher Lord, to give that report. But before he does, I just wanted to personally and actually on behalf of the school committee recognize and thank you, Dr. Lord, for the amazing support that you provided to us, to our school district during these last week and a half, last couple of weeks. You have really been outstanding. The way you provided us with just assurance that things were getting done during this time. I know you were personally grieving, but you really stepped up for our school district when we really needed somebody. And I just wanted to commend you for what you were able to provide to us. And we're very fortunate to have you here in the city. And I just wanted to thank you on behalf of...
Thanks, Mr. May. I've said this before, but I'm just happy to be useful to good people. I feel like I've been part of this PB D family for my whole life. I've only been here for a couple of years, so I'm happy to help out. Happy to help out. So we have one thing on the superintendent's report today. There's a donation of $500 from the ExxonMobil Education Alliance Program to the South Memorial School through Holden Foil.
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second.
Further motion for acceptance with gratitude by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. That's unanimous vote.
And I have one additional thing to add to the superintendent's report. And this is a statement which will go out in writing from all of us, the leadership team and the school committee, shortly, but I'll read it to you here. It says, "We would first like to thank everyone, both within our school district as well as the surrounding cities and towns, for their help and support over the last two weeks. Working with one another, as we live by the core values illustrated in our motto, 'Every student, every day,' has been heartwarming. This local assistance, coupled with our shared community spirit, has done much to make us PB D strong. This mindset was clearly illustrated as we honored Superintendent Kara Murtagh last week. On the day of Kara's wake, while waiting for the ceremony to begin, we discovered a book she was reading, opened to a specific page, and turned upside down on her laptop computer as a reminder to herself when she returned to the office to continue her work. The title of that page described how to brand your school district. While Kara may be gone, her vision is very much alive and within each and every one of us the ability to make it so for our students, our families, and ourselves. Much work has already been done with various groups to realize this vision, beginning with the five Cs of PB D schools: culture, community, curriculum, communication, and children. Our plan, with your support and ongoing input, will be to formalize the five Cs in a strong five-year district strategic plan in which all stakeholders can feel a part and an eagerness with which to engage. Further, in August of this year, Superintendent Murtagh showcased all of our educators a pathway to this extraordinary mission centered around the vision of the graduate. The vision of the graduate initially developed over the last few years at PB D Veterans Memorial High School as seven components that can inform curriculum, instruction, and assessment in all of our classrooms. It illustrates to the community seven fundamental skill sets that we hope all of our students can master each year as our students progress from grade to grade in our schools. They are to become a successful pathfinder, effective communicator, global thinker, problem solver, artist innovator, team player, and self-manager. In mastering these basic skills each year, all students in our city can prepare for the future they and their families choose to create for themselves. With the commitment of every educator to these simple values, we can build on the strengths we already have and brand PB D schools as the local, regional, and national model for public education it is capable of becoming. Our leadership team believes in this mission and we are committed to embedding it in the future work for our schools. Sincerely yours, the PB D Public School Committee and PB D District Leadership Team." Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lord. And I also did want to mention, there were, again, just some tremendous leadership shown under very trying, difficult, emotional circumstances by our leadership team. Joe Scanlon, our business manager, Steve Farrell, our human resources director, was outstanding, Carla Chiota, our special ed director. And I wanted to recognize our ten principals at the eight elementary schools and Mr. Bucy at the middle school. At a number of meetings, and again, we really came together as leaders in our educational system. It was more than just classroom teaching certainly going on this week. And I wanted to thank all of our administrators and our principals for their hard work and their emotional support of our kids and our staff and our teachers. It was all a time of grieving and it was wonderful to have people come together the way they did. So I just wanted to recognize them as well. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lord. We'll go to, we do not have any written communications today, so we'll go right to subcommittee reports. Education Subcommittee, Mr. Hockman. Finance, Mrs. Coppender. School Safety, Mr. Olympio. Athletics and Wellness, Mr. Hockman. Quality and Standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have before us two policies that have come out of the Subcommittee. The first one is for a second reading. It is the policy regarding confiscation of contraband. And this, again, is for the second reading, so I would like to make a motion that the policy be accepted as presented and that after this evening it would become an absolute policy. So move.
Second. Further motion for approval by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympio. On that motion, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. And just briefly, I think the first reading, we changed the last word in the third line from will to shall.
We did. I realized that as soon as I saw your hand go up. And it will be, it shall be corrected.
Shall be shall?
It shall be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
The second policy before you for first reading is a policy regarding bicycle rider safety and responsibility. It is the policy of the PB D public schools that all students riding bicycles to and from school shall follow all state and local laws and rules, including but not limited to obeying the required rules of the road, wearing bicycle helmets, parking and or storing bicycles as directed, and locking bicycles while using the appropriate bicycle racks or storage equipment. Students failing to follow this policy shall be referred, when necessary, to the PB D Police. This policy shall also be included in the parent-student handbooks for all grade levels. Again, this is presented for a first reading this evening, so I would like to make a motion that it be approved for first reading.
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympio. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. And I won't talk too long about this tonight because I don't have a voice. And hopefully in January my voice is back. Just big picture, this policy, I think, just goes beyond the scope of the authority of this committee. While we want all students to adhere to state and local laws all the time, I think it imposes too much of a burden on our staff if they see a student not following a state and local law while not on school property or during a school event or a school day to then direct that student or that matter to the police department. I'll leave it at that. We have plenty of time to talk about it. We can vote on this and amend for a second reading if we need to.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Okay. We'll have a roll call vote on first reading approval?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Parent Advisory Student, excuse me, Parent and Student Advisory Boards, Mrs. Dunn, anything to report?
No, not at the moment. However, we are planning a parent advisory board meeting next week, and I just have to confirm the date and the speaker and topic.
Great. Thank you. Building and Grounds Subcommittee, Mr. Miko?
Nothing else.
Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympio?
I was planning on maybe meeting Wednesday, December 18th. I don't know if that conflicts with you, Mrs. Dunn. I believe it was the 19th that you were...
We were looking at the 19th, so 18th was...
It's not official, but I just have to check in with you. Thank you. Thank you.
And City Council Legislative Delegation, Mr. Arnotis?
Nothing.
Before we go to new business, I did want to report that we did have an executive session meeting prior to this evening's regular school committee meeting. We took a recess. We'll be going back into executive session following the conclusion of this regular school committee meeting.
With the intent of not returning to public session.
Thank you. With the intent of not returning to public session. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Okay. New business. We did have one item. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The new business is, I'm very pleased to bring to you the fact that the PB MHS is looking into restarting the Parent Teacher Student Organization. It was a very vibrant organization for quite some time, and over the past few years it had stopped. And the teachers, through their culture committee, brought this forward so that parents will have an additional opportunity to participate in the education process at the high school level. They're very enthusiastic. They're working to include students. And the first meeting is going to be this week to kind of lay the groundwork, to prepare for a January kickoff. And it was really nice to hear the ideas that the teachers have about moving forward with activities and asking what parents would be able to do and asking how the students can participate as well. So I want to thank Mr. Lord for supporting the culture committee on that initiative. And I want to thank the culture committee for inviting me to give a historical perspective on the PTSO. And it's been a great, great group to work with and they're really doing a nice job.
Great. I want to think about that. The PTSO has these coveted blue tickets to get students out of class last period on Thursday. And they're going to be handing them out randomly to students that they can be a part of. This is an idea we got from the NEAS visit and the NEAS thing from in just that, come and talk with us. So we're going to see if we can get good questions from the student body, as well as student leadership.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
It's a nice project.
Absolutely. Anything else before we adjourn? We have a couple of meetings coming up in January. We do have the inauguration, which will be a short school committee meeting during the inauguration. Pick seat assignments. That'll be January 6th at the Wigan Auditorium at City Hall at 7:00. We have our regular school committee meeting set up for January 14th and January 28th. With that, a motion to adjourn. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for a good meeting. And we'll be going now into executive session.